To the meeting are permitted, nor our comments from any other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember, the meeting is being recorded, so we just heard. Please speak into the microphone and give your name and address. Abusive language is inappropriate and will not be tolerated. Please don't voice displeasure or frustration at recommendation while the plant commission is still conducting business. If you have any questions or concerns, you may contact the Richland County Public Plane Department staff right down below here. Okay, let's go to item number three, which is additions and deletions to the agenda. Commissioners, do we have any additions or deletions, staff?
There's one by staff under item four approval of minutes. If you would remove item four B, which would be the February six minutes. Those are not prepared in time for distribution. But it is from my conversation with transcriptionist. It's expected to have that those minutes for the February sixth, twenty twenty-three. And also the ones from the November seventh, twenty twenty-two available for you at the April meeting. And we will then be caught up.
Bryce. That moves us on to number four, approval of the minutes. The staff provided the commission with copies of the transcript of the commission's December fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Do any commissioners have any comments or concerns regarding these transcripts? If not, the chair makes a motion to approve the minutes from December fifth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second? Mr. Price, can you conduct a vote?
Those in favor with approval of December fifth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Yonkey.
Aye.
Fryerson.
Aye.
Johnson. Dennis.
Aye.
Metz.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sertz.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Now moving on to item number five on our agenda, the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an action item that allows the commission to approve road names and map amendment requests where, one, the staff recommends approval. Two, no one from the public has signed up to speak against the amendment. And three, no member of the commission is in need of further discussion on their quest. Ms. Fryerson, which cases do we have people signed up for against?
We don't have anyone who has signed up against any of the map amendments at this time.
Thank you. Fellow commissioners, would anyone like to engage in discussion on any of the other map amendments still on the consent agenda? Per our packet, that would be items. Five, A and B. One, two. Four and five. Any discussion on those? If not. I'd like to make a motion as the chair to pass the consent agenda with. Agenda number five, A and B. Items one, two, four and five, all going forward with the road names. That is approved.
Second amendment, I made the motion.
Bryce, please take a vote.
All right, so the motion was for the approval under the consent agenda of the road names in items five, B one. Five, B two. Five, B four and five, B five. All right. Those in favor of the motion? Taylor.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Sertz.
Aye.
Metz.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fryerson.
Aye.
Yonkey.
Aye.
All right, and motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Price. This would move us to our action item today, which would be five, B. Three. Case number twenty-three dash zero zero four MA. Pick it over to Mr. Price, please, for some more information.
All right, next item is case twenty-three dash zero zero four MA. The applicant is Carlos Hart. The location is seven eleven Frost Avenue. The applicant is requesting a result a little less than a third of an acre from RSMD to general commercial. Normally, in order to do enact the rezoning request or to initiate a rezoning request, you must have at least two acres of land. But there's certain conditions that will allow, excuse me, would it will allow for. There is on request, and in this particular case. The subject parcels adjacency to general commercial zoning allows for that request. Staff recommends disapproval of this amendment as a request would be would not be consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Per the plan, non-residential development within a neighborhood medium designation. May be considered for location along main road corridors. And within a contextually appropriate distance from the intersection of a primary material. This request is not located along a main road corridor. Or within an appropriate distance from intersection of a primary material. Additionally, the plan states that commercial uses should not be located within. Should be located within neighborhood activity centers. The request does not fall within the neighborhood activities zone.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
Yeah.
Ms. Taylor?
Yeah.
I thought you were about to say something.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wanted to point out something. So I'm sure one of the things that you may have noticed on your package, and this was again another discussion that staff has had. I'm looking at this request, and you'll see it on page twenty-two of your packet. That the surrounding properties around it are zone general commercial. So we did a lot of research. We pulled. Multiple old ordinances, old maps to see. And all our records indicate that those parcels were zone general commercial. And it goes back to sometime before the eighty-four. Before nineteen eighty-four, because that was the last one we found before the change occurred. So I can't give you the actual reasons why. Those were resulted in general commercial, but the intent was, but those. Parcels, even though they have a general commercial zoning designation, they still are not in compliance with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. And we did not take take those, the current rezonings as. We did not use those as to determine whether this, you know, our recommendations would change. It was based solely on the comprehensive plan.
Chairman.
Yes.
Applicant present.
Person.
Applicant didn't sign the sheet, but I see a gentleman raise his hand.
Do you like a few minutes to speak? Yes, right, come on down to the podium. You'll have two minutes. Please state your name and address.
Excuse me. I apologize. I think Mr. Taylor may have had a question. I'm not sure if I addressed it, but I think he had a question before I spoke.
Question was under. Want to be sure the application was accepted. It was less than two acres, but it was because it was an extension of the existing general commercial. That's the reason it was accepted. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Come on down, sir. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Sorry I was late. I was helping someone jump a car in the parking lot. So my name is Carlos Hart. I am part owner to seven zero one one Frost Avenue and. Is there any specific things you would like me to? Address?
But then tell us about your map amendment request.
Okay, so we would like to convert the property to a general commercial based on the. Outlying properties that surround it. Just because we would like to use it for for offices and. Just and also because there's so much more commercial activity that's happening and just in that one region. We would just, we would like to. Use it for that purpose. So. All right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, we have. This property up here for discussion.
Question. It's on the con. This does not fall within a neighborhood activity center. But exactly. When you say falls within, I mean, is that a specified distance or within the the boundaries of an activity center? I just wanted to get clarification on what that means.
Okay, if you would turn to page twenty-three in your package. Yeah, so within our, looking at the comprehensive plan, the future land use. Map for the north central planning area. You can see where we have an arrow drawn to the parcel. But if you take a look. You see a couple of rings. One is a red ring, which represents a community activity center. See the one with a brown ring represents a neighborhood activity centers. So within those, those are typically areas where we designate more of your commercial uses. Versus where the subject parcel lies.
Here.
Yes.
Price, looking at this on the surface, it seems like all this being asked for is to turn this parcel into the same zoning as that which surrounds it on three sides. But you're telling us that it doesn't conform with the comprehensive plan. Am I to assume or we to assume that the the remaining general commercial that's around this property are going to be converted to something else somewhere down the line?
Well. No, sir. I'm not sure exactly what will happen to this general commercial. The only way that it would be changed is either by the initiation of the property owners or an applicant. Or even by the county, you know, either through the county administrator, county council, planning director, or the planning commission. Could initiate a rezoning request. But as far as in future intent of that parcel, we don't know.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Question for staff.
Sure.
Mr. Price, the. If I understood you right. Earlier, you said that even though the surrounding areas are general commercial, they've been that way since at least nineteen eighty-four. And there's no real indication as to why they were made that way, but that. Those parcels, given the surrounding nature or the the nature of the surrounding area, that those would not. Be in conformance with the current comprehensive plan. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sertz.
Here.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Uh, the adjacent property to the right of it, is that owned by the same applicant? GIS is showing that. Here is to that. Sure.
Yes, sir.
Will open first. The questions.
I, for some reason, I can't get over this point that the the purpose of this application seems is just to simply make this one parcel. Conform with everything that's around it. Yet. For what, for the reasons stated by Mr. Price, we we shouldn't approve it because it had to conform with the comprehensive plan. But that would mean to me the other parcels don't conform to the comprehensive plan either. That would that be correct?
That's correct.
Chairman.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Johnson.
I think this price was. I was just gonna say, Mr. Durant, I know this, 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 this will occur. I will tell you probably a little more frequently. As you continue to serve on the planning commission. Again, once we, when we adopted the comprehensive plan and we have identified. The designations for our future land use plan. You're gonna run. It was done relatively broadly. You know, we can't address every parcel. We can't address every situation. Again, one of the points is, you know, from a staff standpoint, we always recommend according to what the rich thing out in comprehensive plan states. But use a planning commission, it can take that information and and really kind of look at a little more broadly. You could make the argument. What makes sense? Or what seems to fit because you're looking at it a little more differently than what we normally would as a staff.
Here.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I would like to send case number twenty-three dash zero zero four MA to county council. With recommendation of approval. Reason being is it does fit with the surrounding. Parcels that are general commercial, and the applicant actually owns a general commercial that this is a part of. So I'm going to air on the side of property rights and. Go that route.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. I think I heard a second. Can I hear that again? Second for Mr. Johnson. Have a motion on the floor and a second, so I believe we conduct a vote.
Those in favor of the motion to approve, excuse me, case twenty-three dash zero zero four MA. Sertz.
No.
Taylor.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Metz. Dennis.
Aye.
Johnson. Fryerson.
Aye.
Yonkey.
Aye.
Right, and motion passes.
Price, thank you, commissioners. And again, we are recommending body. County council will be taking this on their agenda. Their next meeting, hopefully. That is it for item number five. On our agenda. Along to number six, chairman's reports.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Look around. We still have a number of people here, so some of them may be a little perplexed about what happened with the the consent agenda. So you may want to go elaborate on that so that they'll know what happened.
So looking back at item five on our agenda. We had five map amendments to look at today. If staff recommends approval and none of the commissioners would like to speak on it. These map amendments are thus approved. And they get moved to county council with that recommendation. So the case will be taken up again at their next meeting. With the staff's recommendation of approval and now the planning commission's recommendation of approval. Thank you. I'm sorry. We moved along too quickly there.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Also remind everybody out there that the public zoning hearing date that these will be brought up will be March twenty-eighth.
March twenty eighth, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to number six, chairman's report. I just wanna say thanks again to my fellow commissioners for all their time and effort they invest each month in this commission. Last month, I mentioned this year as your chair, my primary goal is to promote debate and conversation amongst our group as well as provide time. For public participation. Again, any feedback from you and how we can make the most of twenty twenty-three. As a commission to serve Richland County the best we can is always welcome. Thank you. Staff, are there any updates on scheduling a work session for annual training? This can be as simple as scheduling time in this building to review our rules and any materials provided to us from you. We should be welcoming a new member soon. I'm assuming we have one vacancy. So it would be nice to line up that training whenever that person joins us. Ms. Price? Yep, good. Any updates on that? Do you know?
No, I'm sure that the rules and appointment committee will continue to do their interviews. And they make sure that they interview all applicants. If they have twenty, then they will view all twenty before they make their recommendation.
Also, later in the year, I'd like to help coordinate a retreat where we can hear from other departments. We've successfully had two of these during my time on the commission, and I found both of them to be extremely valuable for both us. And those from the public who choose to attend. So any way I can help. At some point in twenty twenty-three to host something like that, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna move on to number seven, the planning directors' reports.
So at this point. We have three items on there. One is for a report from Assistant County Administrator Eric Jensen about the Lower Richland Focus Group. We also have the reporter council from their decisions based on the February twenty twenty, excuse me, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three zoning public hearings on page forty-one of your package. We also had the rules of procedure, which is asked that. We'll take that up at a later date. Again, which says that you continue to review. And it will staff will kind of come up with our own recommendations and send those to you. And then we'll have those prepare for subsequent meeting for you to then decide on any changes that you deem necessary. But at this time, I'll turn this over to ACA Jensen.
Excuse me, I have a question, please. Mr. Price, I was looking at pages forty-one and forty-two, and I noticed that for each of the map amendments, the council unanimously deferred the zoning request. Is there any rationale or reason as to why that was so? To your knowledge.
Yes. I know specifically Councilwoman Baron, she likes to have a community meeting. In the community to discuss the cases in which she will then have the applicant to show and meet with the community to discuss the request. Councilwoman. English, or her deferral, she just wanted a chance to kind of talk to the applicants to get a better understanding of their request. Home prior to her making a decision.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Price, we'll go to Mr. Jensen.
Right. Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. Let's make this a little bit higher. Pleasure to be with you again. It's not too often that I get to come down to planning commission, but with all the land development code going on. I've been here more often than I ever expected, so glad to see your faces. For those of you who are, well, you know, everyone's been here long enough. You know who I am, and you know, I come from a planning background and community development is my personal passion in life. It's what I. Grew up doing from a young age and I continue to do, even though I'm an assistant county administrator now. And so. At the last meeting of October, the planning commission requested that we as staff go back and work with the folks in Lower Richland. And gather additional information on what they thought of the recommendations and the land development code amendments. And the the request was that we come back two weeks later and report, well, that's not, you know, I. That's not possible. And so we went through and we did our due diligence. And we we conducted what we call a focus group. And a focus group, for those of you who who have a little bit of a marketing background, that is where. A client has a specific. Product or idea or something that they want to vet with a group of people that are representative of a larger group of people. And and so what we did is we went to Councilwoman English and Councilwoman Newton, Shaqis Newton. And we said, the planning commission would like more information on what the people in Lower Richland think. Of what is being proposed in terms of land use density and uses and so forth. Per the code amendment or per the code update. And so we did, and the council members came back with a list of people that they wanted to have participate in this focus group. And we also included a couple others. The mayor of Eastover volunteered his services to come and join, and when the mayor, you know, calls, you always say yes. So the mayor was part of the focus group. And the focus group took place over two days. So the first day we were focusing on specifically just the background information, educating them on what a focus group was, on what the issues were. And then the second day was the day when the deliberation took place, and there was about a month in between the two. So there was time for the folks to go back, think about what they had learned, talk with their neighbors and so forth, and then to come back for the second meeting. So if you would, oh, and just really quickly, so Brian Davis. And I co-facilitated the meeting. And it's always better when you have two facilitators, because one of them can be working with the folks and the other can be observing and taking notes. And so I'm very appreciative to Bryant for assisting me with that. So if you would, Mr. Delage, to the next one. So here is, we had the, that's what I just said, sorry, flip to the next one. So yeah, so Brian Davis and I, we did it on the December eighth, and on January nineteenth, we held it at the Lower Richland Library. Next slide. We had a very broad spectrum of participants, which is what you want to have in a focus group. Okay, next one, please. So the topic that we introduced was specifically rural residential lot sizes and densities. What is appropriate for Lower Richland? So it was a very open-ended question, but it was a narrow focus. You know, we weren't talking about the whole land development code. We were talking about this specific topic, but it was very open-ended in the sense that they could tell us anything that they wanted. Okay, next slide. One of the interesting things that we found, and this wasn't something that we asked about, but the participants. Said in in one of the first meetings or in the first meeting, excuse me, they said, well, you understand that there are effectively two. Areas in Lower Richland. And they said, there's this one section that's, I called it Upper Lower Richland, just meaning that it's closer to downtown. And the folks there had a particular set of issues and things that they prioritized. That were slightly different than the folks who are in quote unquote, lower, lower Richland, which is further away from. And lower and closer down toward the Congaree River and the confluence down there. Okay. So the, everybody in in the in the group, no matter where they were from, you know, were very concerned about development. The folks in Upper Lower Richland were obviously more concerned about. Development coming now. They were, it was a more pressing issue for them in terms of they're seeing it happening right now. It, as you got further down in Lower Richland, they were a little less concerned about it, and they were more concerned about not having enough services. Which makes sense because it's a longer drive from Eastover to downtown. Okay, next one, please. So again, regardless of the location, these were the things that. They they talked about, and in particular, a reoccurring theme was preservation of rural character or preserving the rural character. And so we asked them, we said, well, what does that mean, rural character? Because that's not a, something you can look up in the dictionary and just get a, an answer and go, oh, yeah, that's rural character. No, you can't. And so, and it's very. You know, context sensitive. And so these are the points, these bullet points are the things that came out of the the group. Large working lands, and that means active agricultural fields, like commercial agriculture. Large spaces between homes, not tract homes. Not everything carved up into one acre lots. Both timber and crop production. And small personal farms, and again, small is, you know, dependent, you know, one acre to someone is is a farm and to others. And to others, you know, ten, twenty acres. Um, and so some of the definitions we heard, which I thought was interesting. One person said a one mule farm was his definition of a small farm. Another person said, if it's big enough to turn your tractor around at the end of a row, then it's a real farm. Okay, those are not one acre, two acre, three acre definitions. Um, next slide, please. Um, again, all the participants were concerned about the lack of commercial services in Lower Richland. And as I mentioned, the further way you, the further away you were from downtown, the more concerned you were, generally speaking. Um, one of the participants actually said after the first meeting. Would you get me a copy of all your maps? Because I want to go around to my neighbors and talk to them about where I think we should be putting commercial services. So we will be collecting that information from that individual and we'll find out what he and his neighbors had to say. Uh, next one, please. Um, we discussed specifically the three different, um, rural zones that are in the twenty twenty one L D C or the replacements for the rural zones. Um, A G, H M, and R T. And we talked specifically about, uh, we asked them specifically, excuse me. What do you think of the planning commission's recommendations? What do you think of the text as it was currently passed? Because again, the planning commission has slightly different, uh, had, you know, recommended some changes to it in terms of densities and so forth. Um, so if you'll flip to the next one, please. Um, so this was a, uh, an exercise that we, we'll come back to the zoning, the, the densities in a second. Um, we did an exercise on subdivisions because what we heard in the group, some folks said. You know, everybody should be able to, if you own ground, you should be able to subdivide and give a piece of it to your children indefinitely. And others said, no, 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 we don't want people to continue to subdivide their ground. We want it to stay the way it is right now. And then you had people in between. And so we did an exercise, and this is a very simple exercise. We had a great big, you know, pad of paper and I put it on the table. And I started out and one of the applicants said, my family owns a hundred acres. And so I said, okay, great. So I drew a box and we called it a hundred acre box. And then he said, well, you know, let's divide it between three of my. You know, three people, three heirs. And so we divided into three and then we went through and we did scenarios until we got to a point where the people said, you know what, that's too small. You have to stop subdividing because that's not rural anymore. And that was about the one acre size is where they kind of said, uh, uh, no, if, once you hit one acre, you can't subdivide it anymore. Because we don't think that's rural anymore. And so we had a big discussion on that. You know, is that the right size or not? And we'll, uh, we'll come to that in a second. Uh, next slide, please. Um. So one of the things that they came, that they talked about when they said, what is rural character? And they said, you know, rural character is having large chunks of working land. It's having homes. It's having some services, but not big urban type of, of, of development. And so we got into, how do you do that? And so when we got into the three different zones into A G, H M, and R T. Um, they were looking at the densities that were recommended and council had at about one in. Yeah, you had about six acres, for example, to do a lot in the A G zone. Planning Commission kind of reduced that down. I want to say it was about three ish acres, somewhere in that ballpark. Well, they said, we want to go the other direction, or we would recommend to go the other direction. We think A G should be a ten acre minimum. And their reasoning was that they said, um, at densities of ten acres or one unit for every ten acres. Nobody will come and develop under that density, under that zoning. Cause they don't, they won't get enough lots, or at least in their opinion, they wouldn't get enough lots. And so then they'd have to come in and petition for a rezone to R one or R two or something else. And so then they would get a chance to go to a public hearing and to voice their opinion to the planning commission. And to the council on what they think the zoning should be. So in other words. There would not be administrative suburban style subdivisions occurring at densities of ten acres for every unit. Okay, next slide. Um, so then we got to the H M zone. And, um, they wanted, they were recommending two acres. I think, I think they. I want to say that in the twenty twenty one is, it was about two and a half acres. And the planning commission recommended down to one and a half. And they kind of said, we think two acres. And, and I said, well, why do you buy two acres? And they said, well, because that's about how big our properties are right now, and that's what we want them to be. And so that was, and again, this is a group of citizens. This is not, they're not scientists. They're not, they don't do this for a living. And they just said, you know, two acres is about how big our lots are. And, and we think that the lots around us should be two acres also. Um, then we get to the R T zone. And in R T, um, this is where we had probably our longest discussion. And, um, some of the folks again said that, you know, right now it's three quarter acre under the two thousand five code. Um, it's going to one acre in the two, in the twenty twenty one. And I think the planning commission also recommended one acre. And they said, you know what? Some of the people at the table said, we wanted to go back down to three quarters of an acre. And others said, no, we don't think that's appropriate. Um, and, and at the end of the day, they discussed it back and forth. And, um, the, the, the one acre folks prevailed. And, but the folks who have three quarter acre lots right now said. If it's going to go that direction, we want to make sure that our three quarter acre lots can still be developed. That they can have all the uses and so forth that all of the one acre lots can. And so we, we didn't go into any detail, but we just basically said, you know, that, that, yes, there's provision under the law. If you're an existing lot. And so forth, and the zoning changes, you can continue to use your lot. And so they were very, and they said, okay, we'll find as long as that is set somewhere where we can see it and, and, and you'll. Physically touch it and know that that's the case, then we can support one acre. Okay, next one. So here's a table I put together. Okay, here we go. Now we can look at the numbers. So here's the table that I put together really quick. So the focus group recommended ten acres per lot for, um, A G, two acres per H M, one for R T. Uh, planning commission recommended three, one point five and one. And the, uh, twenty twenty one L D C as adopted by council is six and two thirds, uh, three acres and one point five. So you can kind of see how, uh, uh, we know where they felt. And again, I explained it. The reason they wanted to make it less dense in A G, again, is because they, their goal was to preserve large, big pieces of agriculture. And they didn't want, um, uh, administrative style approval for subdivisions to come in. On those large tracts of land that they wanted to preserve as working lands. So that's why they recommended that. Uh, again, I told you for the H M zone. They picked two acres just because the people who were in the focus group said, we have two acre lots and we like two acre lots. And that was it. And then in the R T, again, we, they, they went to one acre simply because, um. They felt that was the smallest that you could go and still be considered rural. Next slide, please. Um, there was unanimous support for the planning commission's recommendation. Um, to allow people to come in and for, without feet to change the zoning. So if they were R U and they got zoned to. A G, H M, or R T, and they thought that was the wrong one, that they could have a year to come in and petition to have it changed to something different. Everyone thought that was a fantastic idea. Uh, next one. We, there were some other observations, things that we did not ask. But that we took note of during the process. That's very common when you do a thing like this, you hear things that you didn't expect or you didn't ask. So here's some of the other observations that we, uh, that we recorded. Next slide. Um, in general, the people, um, who participated. Just were not, and they didn't understand the zoning process at first. There was some substantial education to kind of get them up to speed for the conversation. Uh, next one. Um. There are a lot of rumors, uh, circulating. And as the program, as the, uh, process moved forward, uh, we found that the, that, that, the rumors sort of subsided. And, you know, folks kind of realized what was happening. That is very common. Okay, next. Um. There was a lot of misunderstanding between what the comprehensive plan is and what the, the land development code is. Again, that's a pretty common, uh, thing. Next one. Um. So we had a discussion about things that were happening in Lower Richland. In particular, how subdivisions were occurring without, um, there being public hearings. Without the public being able to participate in a process because the question was asked, how come? Subdivisions are being approved on this, they just named some parcels of ground. And, and we don't get a chance to vote on it, or the planning commission or the council doesn't. Particularly, they said the council, they said, how come we go and talk to our council member? And they say, well, we don't get to vote on that. That's not, we don't approve that. And so we went through and we had a discussion on how administrative approvals versus legislative approvals, uh, take place. And that had a big, um. Impact in my opinion on how they eventually, uh, recommended their, why, again, I think that was part of the discussion on why ten acres? Why two acres? Why one acre? Because on these large parcels of ground, they wanted people to have to come in. And petition for a rezone and to have a public hearing before any development occurred. Uh, next one. At the end of the exercises, when we unveiled the maps and, um. It was very interesting. So when the maps got put out on the table, you could, you know, we sat back and just kind of watched them to see what they would say and do. And, uh. They were very excited with these new maps. And, uh, part of it was, again, because if you look at it, you can see these big. You know, chunks of dark green, which are the A G zone. And then you can see some kind of, uh, lighter green. Those are the, uh, proposed H M zonings. And then if you see the, the very light kind of a yellowish green, that is the, uh, where the R T or one acre, you know, minimum size zoning would occur. And what they said was that they liked this because it seemed to, um. Convey their idea of rural character. Because they could see large pieces of working agricultural lands with, you know, interspersed with other uses. And they said, that's much closer to what we think Lower Richland should look like than the current map, which is just one color. Are you just all are you? Uh, next slide. Um, again, this is the same thing, uh, what I just talked about, that, uh. They were very concerned by the fact that subdivisions and so forth were being approved. And yet the council never got to see them and they never got a chance to have their voices heard, that they would just get approved administratively. So we had that discussion. And again, um, that I think influenced some of their, uh, recommendations. Okay, um, one more. That's, um, so the conclusion, one more, please. So what we heard, and, and this is not uncommon, this is, I've worked in many jurisdictions, prepared many master plans for. Uh, rural and sensitive areas in my career. And what we heard was that. Citizens are concerned about how things are changing. And they're concerned that they're, that they don't think they have a voice in the changes. Um, we heard that they want to do everything with their property and they don't want their neighbor to do anything. That's, that's just human nature. Um. We heard that there's a concern and a desire for more commercial services. But there's a concern that too much will overwhelm and change their community and how they perceive it. Um, again, and then the last was that we heard that they want more input. Into how their community is developed, uh, in particular, how they can create and protect, uh, the rural character of their area. So that is the, uh, reported the focus group. At this point, um. The planning commission, if you so desire, you can schedule another at a future meeting, not at this one. To take an action or make any recommendations based on this information to council. Uh, but this one is just noticed for a report. So if you wanted to do so, you would need to tell staff to schedule that for a future agenda. And a future meeting, uh, but other than that, that's my presentation.
Chair?
Yes.
Has one question, Mr. Jensen?
Yes, Mr. Jensen.
Wha- what is the definition you guys use for commercial services?
Thank you, if I may. It, it, okay, um. So they defined it as, um, hospital. Com- um, commercial stores in particular. Uh, one person said that there's not a grocery store, um, down there. Another person said, there's not a hospital. Um. But they, they didn't get any more detailed than that. And so I'm very curious, when this citizen that we gave all the maps to comes back, I'm curious to see what. The folks down there determined that is and how big a scope it is.
And emailed copy of this, so we can look through this again?
Absolutely. And I will give you the actual written report. This is just the, but the report's not that much longer, but I'll give you actually copies. Of the actual, my actual detailed report.
Other questions for me? Miller?
Yeah, could we go back to the slide where the recommendations were, um, based on what they recommended? What we sent up and what the original twenty twenty one was, please?
Uh, the table?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It'd be about slide twelve, more or less.
All right.
While they're flipping, I guess my only question was, what was the size of the focus group?
About twenty two people. I mean, I'll get a list of the actual attendance for you. Uh, Bryant has that, but it, it was about twenty, twenty ish people. There we go.
Here. Now, when it came to the A G, I know when we went down to the three acres, wasn't that three acres that was the minimum, but it had to be continuous for thirty acres, right?
Okay, may I respond that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. Yes. So, or in creating the map, uh, thirty five acres was the, uh. Yes, thirty five acres together to create an A G zoning block, correct? Uh, but within that, you know, if you were that, then you could theoretically carve it up into three acre parcels. But correct for the zoning exercise, yes.
Okay, and we made sure we explained that to them, right? Even, okay.
Absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Jensen, looks like these show our minimum thresholds, because I'm looking at the ledger here. Our T would have been one?
Yes, so, uh, if I remember correctly, when we were on the mapping exercise, we said thirty five acres and larger. Uh, we would do as A G, three to thirty five acres would be H M. And then less than three acres would be R T for the mapping exercise. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Any other questions?
Here.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
Who exactly was in these focus groups? Cause I know we had multiple, um, reach outs to people. For a year and a half that came in here and everybody that came in here really wanted more. Rights to subdivide, but I guess the lower, lower Richland does not want that, right? Like the upper, lower Richland? Is that what I got from that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Jensen.
Yes, so. I'm going to say that. W- when you, as a general rule, when you have a public hearing. The people who will come to the public hearing are people who are interested in something in particular. When you do a focus group, you, um, get a broader group of voices. And so I'm not surprised that you heard or that we heard at this focus group, something that is different than what you heard. Because the folks who come down to, who take the time, who come down here have something in mind in particular. Whereas the folks who are happy with the way things are typically will not come to your public hearings. It, that's just. And so when you hear voices, you can't expect that you're going to be hearing necessarily. The most accurate, comprehensive view of opinions, whereas. When you do something like a focus group where you specifically look for di- a diversity of participants, you hear a diversity of opinions.
Yeah, I, I understand that. Uh, it's just, I find it hard, as long as we've been doing this. And as many, not just meetings here, the public meetings that I went to down there and everybody. It was all about subdividing their land as much as we could, but we didn't, you know, we didn't want to have it where they could subdivide it where. Somebody could sell it and then you could subdivide it off and magically have a development, which is currently happening under the old code. So, yeah, I just, I mean, I kind of look at these and I'm kind of like, well, we're kind of in the middle of the twenty twenty one and that. So, I mean, I'm still happy with the work we done. Um. Cause I mean, no matter what, if somebody wanted to make a development, they. And they wanted to even make it an R T, they would have to buy a lot of land. They'd have to subdivide it to one lot, uh, one acre lots. And then they're going to have to bring that to us. And then they're going to have to bring that to county council and all that to resume for that.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, yes and no. So the, um. Yes and no. So the um, i- 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 under the 2005 code and under some of the provisions of the, of the uh, 2021 code, theoretically, you can cluster and you can get your lot sizes down. So somebody who owned, let's just say a hundred acres of something that's zoned RT at one unit per acre could still do 10,000 square foot lots. They would just leave two thirds of the property in open space. And so you can get subdivisions of, or suburban style subdivisions without rezoning.
Didn't we take out the cluster?
Some of it. You did some of, but those have not been adopted yet by council. And so under the language, just what's adopted by council in the 2021, um, that is, could still occur. If the council adopts the modified language, it is less likely to occur, but it could still occur to some extent.
Right, okay.
One more question, Mr. Jensen.
Yes, sir.
Listen, um, I, I detected there was some tension between the folks who um, wanted to make sure you, they retained the rural character and those who wanted additional commercial services. Would, would you say it was split evenly?
Um, Mr. Chair, it, yeah, and I would say actually the bigger discussion was on the lot sizes. That's where we had the biggest diversity of opinion on the commercial services. Um, not as much, but yes, there were some people who said, no, we just want to leave it as is. And there are some who wanted the services, but surprisingly, um, because I think, I, and I'm going to say, I think the reason why is because the discussion was so limited. And the people who wanted the commercial services specifically said, you know, we just want, right at this intersection, we want something or here. They didn't say they wanted it widespread. I, I, I have a feeling that if it had gone that direction, we would have had more discussion. But the big discussion was on the lot sizes. Because there were some very passionate people in there who said, I absolutely want to subdivide for my children and I want them to be able to subdivide. I want them to build a subdivide. And I don't want anybody to be able to tell me that I can't do that. So that voice was very loud. And then we also had the other side, we had the voices that were, no, we don't want everything carved up into one acre lots. That was a, a direct quote from somebody. We don't want everything carved up into one acre lots. That's not rural character. Rural character is having large pieces of working lands with housing dispersed throughout it. And so we had mo- we had multiple voices at the table.
Here.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm stuck on this commercial thing. Um, because I, I remember I introduced a few um, items to change where we could bring some commercial services into rural areas. And then the more research I'd done, I found how that could actually cause an area that should be rural to become not very rural. So that's why I walked that back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I, you know, from the fundamental part of how we bring stuff there. I mean, we can't make companies come down there. We, companies are only going to go where there's a people and they can make money. We know that. Or, or people got to go to those companies. So I, I just, I feel for them, but I mean, it's going to be some time before they, you know, get some of the, I, I just remember growing up in North Carolina. I lived in Rockingham and I went to the big city of Charlotte. And now Charlotte is almost a Wadsworth. And Monroe, like we used to go past Calfield's and it, not anymore. There's like three miles through Monroe, like it's all Charlotte now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you know, I don't see that happening here for a while, a long time. Um, but I, I think it's coming in the years. Cause I, 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 it, it's hard because I looked at Charlotte back in the eighties and they still had more peeper, people per capita in the city of Charlotte than we have in all of Richland County. So um, you know, they're at 1.1 million something now, just in Mecklenburg County. Um, and we're only at 480 something from that, from the last number. So I mean, I, I feel for them and I want to get them some commercial stuff out there, but if we open it up to commercial, that's really going to make some of these people that want to keep it rural mad.
Hmm.
I mean, it's a balancing act for us all. And that's why this, and that's why we've even had it walk back to us, the original one that was passed, because a lot of that. So I, I would, you know, I know the rest of the county is very accept, acceptable for what we've done. Um, some people are still not happy with it and some people are. Um, it's just one of those balancing acts we got to figure out. But yeah, I would like to see this report, please.
Dennis, any other questions for Mr. Jensen? There.
Okay, thank you.
The chairman.
Yes.
Maybe I'm confusing some items. Two meetings, uh, I don't remember exactly, but when Mr. Jensen made another presentation, we had a follow-up where there was a graphic that really um, laid out some comparisons between the three. So, but it really meant intensity stamp. I don't remember if that's in our emails or if it was even distributed, but when this information is sent, it'd be nice to have that as well, to look at them side by side. Like, I can't tell you what meeting that was. Um, when we had it, but that graphic I think would help me to, to digest it.
For September, I think it was. I know I got the notes. I'll, give me a day or two and I'll look through my notes and because I wrote it down. I just got to go back through all my packets.
Dennis, if you find that, you can give that to staff. Staff could distribute or if staff finds it, share that table so you can compare. Thank you, everyone. If there's no more comments on this, I'm going to move on to number eight on our agenda. Was that the end of the chairman's report, Mr. Price? Okay.
Excuse me.
Sorry, the direct plan director's report, yes.
That was the end of it.
Okay, thank you. All right. So for number eight is other items for discussion.
Here.
Yes.
I may have missed, but are we skipping rules of procedure under the planning director's report?
Yes, Mr. Price.
That's, I'm sorry. I thought I'd addressed that earlier. Um, it is on there. Uh, we said that you continue to look at your roles um, in the staff, you know, our intent is to prepare our recommendations to the rules of procedure and we'll get that to you. Who's hadn't gotten together to come up, you know, come up with our version, I guess you could say. And we'll get that to you and then have that prepared um, at a later meeting for us to discuss about any potential changes or amendments to the rules.
Other items for discussion, I have a note here about um, public comments, public participation. Last year when we were doing the land development um, code, there were many times public would come and participate. So just food for thought. Think about that, if that's something we wanted to add into our agenda regularly. If not every meeting quarterly, I'm not sure how that would look, but just wanted to raise that question with, with my peers.
Here.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
You mean like public, public participation, not regarding to anything on here, just to come here, the public, kind of what they want, like commercial services and us kind of look at that in the future or?
Yeah, it's like a public comments.
Okay.
Portion of our agenda.
Copy.
Mr. Price, any other items need to be discussed?
Um, no, sir.
Okay. If not, that takes us to number nine, which is adjournment. So the chair would make a motion for adjournment. Do I have a second? Mr. Dennis, second. Uh, Mr. Price, you want to do a vote of hands? Looks unanimous.